Our session is now called to order. Eh, this rise for our prayer. And pilot finishing of the national anthem.
Manalang ang tay. Panginoong dars. Edina taas na ang iyong pangalan. Pinapupunihan at pinasasalamatang kanan sa lahat ng iyong mga inuwa at pagpakala. Salamat sa kaligang ah, may pinagpadugo sa at sa bukas din.
Ma'am, bayan ang pagpansin ang na rito. Ma'am, secretary. We have a report to present official meeting.
The roong of the San Priyam Bayan members of the eleven San Priyam Bayan. The honorables Jonathan T. Chua, Jordah, Dedyong Gaid Jr., Bernardo Sahibol, Tingsoan, Lanan Ong, Galang Reyes, and Honorable Juadah Irmay in our temporary serving officer. There are ten council members in attendance.
Thank you so much, ma'am secretary. And proceed to read and reading and consideration two minutes of the previous session.
Allow me to present to you the minutes of the previous session, sixty-third regular session for your consideration and approval. Minutes of the sixty-third regular session of the eleven San Priyam Bayan of San Prado Españo Palawan February five, twenty twenty four. At the session hall of the San Priyam Bayan Suproño Españo Palawan, this particular session is attended by the majority of the San Priyam Bayan members. The temporary presiding officer, honorable Juadah Irmay called the session to order at nine thirty-one in the morning. The secretary then called the roll after the prayer.
Alright, any comments or amendments regarding the minutes of the regular session? Please, I'll tell you.
They mostly minutes over the sixty-third regular session. Session of the eleven San Priyam Bayan of Suproño Españo.
Comments or amendments? Pwede pa, pwede. S K, I see clip, okay lang, perfect. Pwede na, pwede na. Pwede na, pwede na. Okay, sige, wala na po, wala na po.
So which is, um, I'm trying to approach the secretary. Na sinabi po sa akin na I couldn't apply the S K po. Ano lang po sana, clarification lang po. Kasi hindi do po ako makaka-apply ng S K kasi nasa ordinance.
Ordinance? Sinong secretary po?
Um, si Ms. Aturay po.
Ah, si Ms. Aturay, okay. Pwede na ba po, wala namang?
Kasi meron po ako sana application for leave. Meron na po akong papel, ano po.
Anybody naman na magkasakit, pwedeng mo? Wala, wala, so... Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Clarification lang po eh.
Well, suspend that one, give way for the secretary to answer the, uh, query of S K Sera. Excuse me, Sera, yata dyan.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And to address the concern po, um, as far as I do remember, I have not answered any query pertaining to the application for leave of the Councilor Shira P. Reyes. I was not asked po, Madam, uh, Honorable, and I did not give such advice. What I told them was, "You could apply for sick leave", but during the time that we had the session last time on Monday, the application was not yet processed. We were just informed during that time po. So, when I have completed the minutes by Tuesday, your application was not yet on my table po. So that was what happened.
So, can we put the honorable Sera for, you know, leave sick, sick, you know? She was absent, but if nag-ano siya na sick leave, apply. We applied sick leave, she applied sick leave. What happened? What happened to this minutes? Can we? Sick leave, okay, okay. So, ma'am?
Yung lang po, clarification lang po sana, thank you po.
Just give the papers to secretary, then we will put here, then you will apply for sick leave. So are you clarified now? Okay, thank you, so much for it. And then... Session resume.
Uh, Honorable Chua, sir? Wala na po? Any, any comments or amendments on these particular minutes? There is not kindly move, sir?
I hope the Secretary, the oral session of the eleven San Priyam Bayan of Suproño Españo held on February five, twenty twenty four of the session hall of the San Priyam Bayan Suproño Españo we approve.
Ma'am, it has been momentarily seconded the minutes of the sixty-third regular session of the eleven San Priyam Bayan of Suproño Españo Palawan held on February five, twenty twenty four at the session hall of the San Priyam Bayan Suproño Españo is hereby adopted. Alright, uh, letter F. Preparation question hour. Anybody who wants to appear in this preparation question hour, can raise your hand if there is none. We will proceed to letter G. First reading and the parallel of most measured communications. We will proceed to letter G. First reading and the parallel of most measured communications. Number one, again.
Communication from Remsil A., Miss, Mrs. Remsil A. Heredera, Secretary of Barangay Pulot Interior submitting barangay executive orders calendar year 2024 of Barangay Pulot Interior. Pulot Interior. Barangay Pulot Interior for appropriate review of the council.
Uh, refer to committee on rules.
To committee on rules.
Number two.
Forward the resolution number three, series of twenty twenty four of barangay panitian of resolution requesting permission from the San Priyam Bayan of Suproño Españo to allow the conduct of three days pinta kasi hat fight on March six, seven, and nine, twenty twenty four, and derby on March eight, twenty twenty four, and barangay panitian Suproño Españo Palawan.
Prepare to committee on ways and means chaired by Honorable Jordah.
To committee on ways and means.
Number three.
Communication from Mr. Isaac A. Matu, Municipal Budget Officer forwarding the TPI of annual budget this year twenty twenty four of barangay Pulot Four of Suproño Españo Palawan for appropriate review.
Refer to committee on finance. Finance.
You will copy on finance.
Number four.
Forward the resolution number zero zero nine, series twenty twenty four of barangay pulot sure, a resolution requesting the honorable San Priyam Bayan of Suproño Españo to allow the barangay council of pulot sure to hold six days on four on February twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-twenty.
Uh, refer to committee on ways and means.
To committee on ways and means.
Number five.
Communication from Honorable Mercito C. Acoy, acting municipal mayor requesting the council to enact a resolution authorizing the acting municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum agreement with the Center for Health Development Imaroa and the Suproño Españo hospital for the medical assistance to endangered and financial challenges of incapacitated patients. Program which is requiring for transfer funds for the Department of Health to the L G U. Urgent consideration is required.
We will to committee on health.
You will copy on health and social services.
Committee on rules.
And committee for the committees on health and social services.
Number six.
Communication from Honorable Mercito C. Acoy, acting municipal mayor requesting the council to enact a resolution authorizing the acting municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Center for Health Development Imaroa for the grant of health emergency allowance to eligible healthcare workers and non-healthcare workers assigned in health facilities in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and other health emergencies which is requirement for the transfer of funds from the Department of Health to the L G U. Urgent consideration is further asked.
Same. Refer to committee on health and committee on rules.
Joinly refer to the committees health and rules.
Number seven, ma'am.
Proposed resolution urgently requesting the honorables Reyes Alpo, Robin Hood, C. Padilla, Juan Miguel F. Zabiri, Lauren Legara, Aquilino Coco Pimentel, the third, and Joseph Victor J. B. G. Ersito, Mark A. Villar, Risa Monteveros, Juan Edgarto Sunny Angara, Maria Lourdes Nazies Binay, Tia S. Caetano, Ronald Bato de la Rosa, Win Gachalian, and Rafiti Tulpo, senators of the Republic of the Philippines to facilitate funding for the concretization of rules in three barangays of the municipality of Suproño Españo.
Refer to committee on infrastructure.
Okay. To committee on public works, transportation, and communication disaster risk management.
Ah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Alright, uh, letter H, committee report. Number one, committee report number dash twenty twenty four.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding. Committee report number two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen submitted by committee on public works, transportation, and communication in disaster risk management subject approval in adoption of the disaster risk reduction management the silency code of Suproño Españo for the presiding officer, the committee prepared to consider the appointed Monsieur Hatt for related to be to two, the same thus would like to present its finding in the competition with following justification to it. Number one, that Honorable Mayor Abner Rafael Intisorio has requested to pass a resolution approving adopting the disaster risk reduction management the silency code of Suproño Españo Palawan subsequent to the endorsement of M D, uh, M, consent to be through a council resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five dot number two, that the adoption implementing, implementation to be there are claim to silency code aligned with national dose in policy particularly the disaster risk management reduction management up of two thousand ten uh, whose according to this public app uh, one zero one two one then reflect the commitment of the municipality to uphold and prioritize the safety within the best consequence. Number three, that the development and implementation of comprehensive there are M, the silency code are pushing to strengthening the municipalities to silence our silence against natural and mandate hazard, to promoting a culture of safety and preparedness in the municipality. Number four, that your consideration of the L R M code, the committee recommend the suggestion listed here under which must be affected and the code be posted upon. A, delineation of specification for CBI as professional organization. Uh, B, correction of office relevance to municipality. C, review of the hazard pay for considered cost since consistency of integrity. Revision of amount penalty to the maximum amount of two five as per local government code. Number five, that the municipality of Suproño Españo recognized the importance of proactive in effective disaster risk management or disaster risk reduction management strategies to safeguard the lives likely hold in properties of its residents. Fighting recommendation, premises considered, the committee find that that approving and adapting the disaster risk reduction management the silency code of Suproño Españo Palawan will ensure the municipalities will prepareness increasing and recovering from various hazard safeguarding the lives properties and wealth being of the people. Thus, it recommend the approval of uh, disaster risk reduction management the silency code of Suproño Españo after revision listed by his, by, uh, has been made referred by first only committee chairman, uh, chairman, uh, disaster risk management uh, confirmed, uh, Sanikipianado, co-chairman, Honorable Jonathan Chua member of the Dado, Regent's member.
Any comments or amendments regarding the committee report number dash twenty-four dash seventeen? Miss no comment? No corrections? There is none, can you move?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Presiding. Committee report, I want the committee report number two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen submitted by committee on public works, transportation, and communication and disaster risk management to be approved.
It has removed, the committee report number dash twenty-four dash seventeen is now, is hereby adopted. Number two, the committee report number dash twenty-four dash twenty-six the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations.
Good morning po. The committee report number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six submitted by committee on finance, budget, and appropriations. Subject, review and approval of annual budgets of twenty-five, twenty, twenty-four of barangay Labuk, Panitian, and Pulon, Suproño Españo for the presiding officer. The committee to which the presiding issue was referred to already considered the same and would like to present its regulation with the following justifications to it. Number one, that municipal budget officer awarded his reviews of annual budgets cited above in the same reflect recommendations to approve provided conditions and review letters are observed or adhered to. Number two, that the project and income of subject barangays are reflected here under along with the sources. The area barangay Labuk has total estimate amounting six million two hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred three perang, national tax alert, alertment, ten million six hundred seventy-two seventy-two thousand three hundred three pesos. Share perang property tax, one hundred thirteen thousand business tax, one hundred eighty thousand fees and charges, two hundred ninety-seven thousand subsidy, parillio, ten thousand. Barangay panitian, minority barangay panitian has total income estimates amounting to seven million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-nine pesos perang share perang R P T, fifty thousand fees and charges, sixty thousand national tax alertment, seven million five hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred thirty-nine pesos aid, parillio, ten thousand income perang market, forty-six thousand literacy. Barangay Palang has total income estimates amounting to five million four hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight pesos and seventy-three centavos perang twenty-eight four million six hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-three point sixty pesos share perang R P T, five hundred two thousand four hundred thirty-five business tax Leras certification, two hundred thousand other taxes, fees, and charges, one hundred thousand L G O subsidy, ten thousand. Number three, that the budget identified by the barangays are to expended on following the area barangay Labuk's annual appropriation of six million two hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred three pesos is allocated to P S two million seven hundred forty-two thousand four hundred forty-two point fourteen in O O E one million twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three point sixty pesos revenue expense, three hundred thousand supplies and materials, sixty thousand communication expenses, expenses, sixty-five thousand fuel, oil, and other one hundred thousand donation, two hundred fifty-eight thousand and other in O O E sixty-two thousand barangay foundation, one hundred thousand municipal foundation, thirty-five thousand electricity, thirty-six thousand water bill, fifteen thousand. Special purpose appropriations, two hundred at two million five hundred eight thousand three hundred sixty-nine point twenty-six appropriation for escape, six hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred thirty point thirty appropriation for twenty percent development fund, one million one hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred sixty point sixty barangay disaster is reduction and management fund three hundred thirteen thousand six hundred fifteen point fifteen pesos other authorized S P A's five percent guard, three hundred thirteen thousand six hundred fifteen point fifteen one percent senior citizen, sixty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-three point three one percent L C P C, fifty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-three point three to be barangay panitias annual appropriation of seven million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred, three hundred thirty-three pesos is allocated to P S three million two hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred eighty in O O E one million two hundred thirty thousand two hundred seventy-seven revenue expenses, three hundred fifty thousand gasoline oil and lubricants, eighty thousand donation, one hundred eighty thousand fidelity bar, ten thousand membership use and contribution to organization, five thousand communication expenses, ninety-six thousand office supplies, fifty-five thousand barangay foundation, one hundred eighty thousand municipal foundation, forty thousand barangay nutrition program, fifty thousand electricity, eighty-six thousand water bill expenses, fifty thousand utility expenses, eight thousand eight hundred other Igori, seventy-four thousand four hundred seventy-seven pesos special purpose appropriations, three million two hundred nine thousand seven hundred eighty-two twenty percent development fund, one million five hundred eleven thousand sixty-eight pesos, five percent guard, three hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred sixty-seven pesos five percent B R R M F three eighty-six thousand four hundred sixty-seven one percent L C P C, seventy-five thousand five hundred fifty-three pesos one percent senior citizen, seventy-seven thousand two hundred ninety-three ten percent escape fund, seven hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four barangay pulang's annual population amounting five million four hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight pesos point seventy-three is allocated to P S two hundred, two million one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred Igori, four hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred ten point sixty-nine P S, PP printer, eight thousand one hundred twenty-four point twenty-three revenue expenses, ninety thousand energy expenses, fifty-five thousand supply and materials, fifteen thousand donation, twenty-six thousand six hundred barangay foundation, eighty, eighty thousand electric and water bills, one hundred ten thousand annual dues, five thousand fidelity bar, eight thousand fuel and lubricants, thirty thousand rest of accessories, thirty-five thousand others, three thousand one hundred eighty-six point forty-six special purpose appropriations, escape fund ay, two hundred, two million one hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred eighty-eight point four number one, escape fund, five hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine point eighty-seven twenty percent development fund, nine nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred twelve point seventy-two five percent B D R R M F two hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred ninety-nine point ninety-three five percent guard, two hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred ninety-three point ninety-three one percent senior citizen, fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety-nine point ninety-eight one percent L C P C, forty-six thousand five hundred seventy-five point sixty-three one percent badac, fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety-nine point ninety-eight number four, that the twenty percent development fund of subject barangays had been distributed as reflected here under barangay Labuk, the area barangay Labuk health program ay, barangay Labuk, one million one hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred sixty point sixty health program, three hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred sixty point sixty education programs, forty-nine thousand education program, seventy thousand L A S, thirty thousand E H S, thirty thousand A S, ten thousand N E S, ten thousand P E S, ten thousand nutrition program, eighty-five thousand economic program, five hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred number one, improvement of barangay hall, one hundred ninety thousand two hundred improvement of market building, forty-nine thousand improvement of barangay cemetery, forty-nine thousand improvement of training scanner, forty-nine thousand road maintenance, two hundred thousand CCTV, one hundred thousand barangay panitian social services, one million five hundred eleven thousand six hundred sixty-eight pesos number one, impok pakalusugan, four hundred sixty thousand benta social services, four hundred sixty thousand impok pakalusugan, ten thousand prok mabuhay basket court, one hundred thousand improvement of prok parigay center, thirty thousand improvement of public market, fifty thousand barangay hall perimeter fence, face two, fifty thousand construction of vendors building, fifty thousand improvement of gender support, twenty thousand badac, forty thousand barangay hall gate, face two, twenty thousand maintenance of barangay plaza, fifty thousand improvement of barangay nutrition building, thirty thousand economic, economic services, school develop, eight hundred eighty-six thousand sixty-eight number one, school development, sixty thousand agricultural program, sixty thousand barangay road maintenance, nine hundred thousand improvement of multipurpose building, fifty thousand improvement of all barangay hall kitchen, seventy thousand improvement of old, old health center, eighty thousand improvement of water system, thirty thousand pato ito, ipakutu cemetery, thirty thousand improvement of health center, thirty thousand construction, agriculture building two hundred thousand generators warehouse, twenty-six thousand sixty barangay hall improvement view, one hundred fifty thousand improvement of view, barangay kitchen, twenty thousand environmental management, one hundred sixty-five thousand number one, eating tree, ninety thousand number two, grass cutter, fifty thousand number three, barangay drainage, twenty thousand improvement of M R F, twenty thousand solar light, twenty thousand barangay pulang, nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred twelve point seventy-two social development, three hundred thirty-one thousand number one, nutrition celebration, fifty thousand health center, pato ito, shade, forty-nine thousand foundation celebration, ninety-three thousand feeding program, thirty thousand fuel and lubricant, forty-nine thousand supplies and materials, seventy thousand economic services, three hundred fifty-nine thousand number one, A to thirteen prok, one hundred thirty thousand road maintenance, one hundred thousand building maintenance, eighty thousand install improvement, public market, forty-nine thousand environmental development, four, two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred twelve point seventy-two number one, to start clean up, twenty thousand construction of M R F, forty-nine thousand fuel, oil, lubricant, vehicle maintenance, one hundred thirty thousand convert, forty-two thousand five hundred twelve point seventy-two number five, that object of expenditures budgeted where the P P S identified in the P I P of subject barangays number six, that the figure in barangay distribution perang the barangay panitian reflects discrepancy in one percent L C P allocation to fifty-five thousand five hundred fifty-four instead of seventy thousand five hundred fifty-three findings and recommendation, premises considered, the committee finds that annual budgets, budgets reviewed are compliant to all budgetary policies and guideline and reflected from some judicial fish, risk card management whose every comment to approve them as of operative and, uh, integrity, provided typo, typographical errors of figures are corrected partner suggest that the mission be carried on for secondary on the next regular session referred by Honorable Juadah Irmay Chairman Committee on Finance, concord Honorable Napisahibol, Honorable Fred, ikatonggay po, Chairman Rangers member.
Uh, any comments or amendments regarding the committee report number dash twenty-four dash twenty-six? Yes, sir? Of course, it's a little hard, sir.
Ah, ito lang po, ano 'yung do's, um, at 'yung nakikita natin dito sa barangay Labuk kasi nakalagay dito 'yung one percent senior citizen ay, sixty-two thousand ba't 'yung L C P C, 'yung local children, oh, protection children is only, is one percent din, bakit seven fifty-six thousand? Ano dapat, dapat sana, maging sixty-two thousand din sa, kasi talimong one percent.
Pwede po, mali ito, dapat mariyas.
Oo, kasi, kasi one percent dito, Mr. Presiding, 'yung
Yes, sir. No, no, good comment.
Pwede po, so.
How it do?
Patiingin mo sa paritian, so besa ini, grunting.
Same siya, no one percent, pero. Seventy-five, seventy-seven, LCPC nila.
Dapat same.
Same, ayos na lang natin, and then, approval, seventy-six, fifty-four din, huh? One percent.
Same din po, sana, one percent.
Lahat ng barangay?
Lahat ng barangay po. 'Yung one percent nila, hindi magkakatupma 'yung.
Mas baba ang LCPC. 'Yung siguro silang pormila ito. Mas mababa, seventy-five 'yung isa, seventy-seven 'yung isa. Mababa sa iba mo siya. So siguro, madam secretary, bago natin i, ano to, release by, para review mo natin sa body. Bago, save mo, okay lang. Okay lang sa body po. Ah, sige. So, any comments or amendments? There is none, kindly move, sir.
I move committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-six, submitted by committee on finance, budgeting appropriations, subject review in, approval, one, one, budget. Budgets, this can be twenty-two four barangays law book, paritian at punang Subproyono Españo la di adopte.
Last one, boundary. Move, committee report number twenty-two four dash twenty-six, submit. Okay, uh, councillor Tinson is requested for five minutes, please. Okay, so request granted, councillor Toto Tinson. Alright, session resume. And leave back to our seats. Number three. Committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-eight, the county rules, lost good government and privileges. Request for the resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into memorandum agreement with the DSWDO. Or memorandum pa, for the supplementary feeding program in the municipality of Subproyono Españo la, flower.
Committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-eight, submitted by committee rules, lost good government and privileges. Subject, request for resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into memorandum agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the supplementary feeding program in the municipality of Subproyono Españo la. For the presiding officer. The committee rules, lost good government and privileges, which has been tasked to, to consider, subject mission would like to report to this honorable body its findings and recommendations with the following premises to it. Number one, that the request has communicated by Ms. Mary Gries, Minister Atore, MSWDO, last January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, and had been calender during the sixty-third regular session for proof approval, but was denied approval of contention that the request, request was not based by the power of request, power to request measures for urgent consideration of his bid. Number two, that the same memorandum agreement shall cover the terms and conditions for the implementation of the supplementary, supplementary feeding program, including the allocation of resources, coordination of activities, and evaluation mechanisms. Number three. That partnering with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, through a memorandum of agreement, will reinforce the municipality's efforts to combat malnutrition and ensure the well-being of young children and need of nutritional assistance. Number four, that the partnership does not involve money but provision of own staff for the database updating and programs provision. Findings and recommendation, premises considered, the committee finds that this resolution will reinforce the municipality's effort to combat malnutrition and ensure the well-being of young children and need of nutritional assistance. Therefore, the committee recommends that passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum agreement with the, the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the supplementary feeding program in the municipality of Subproyono Españo la, and to be calender for second reading in this particular session, prepared by Honorable Jualai Har main, chairman to meet and loss, chairman, on, laws, lost good government and privileges. Record, Honorable Napi Saigon, member, and your serving member.
Right, any comments or amendments to committee report, dash twenty-four, dash thirty-eight? There is none, kindly move.
I move committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-eight, submitted by committee rules, lost good government and privileges, subject request for resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the supplementary feeding program in the municipality of Subproyono Españo la, be adopted.
Has been moved. Committee report number dash twenty-two four dash thirty-eight is served by adopted. Uh, committee report number dash twenty-two four dash thirty-eight, by the committee rules, lost good government and privileges. Mr. Jordan, sir, let's go the order.
Committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-nine, submitted by committee on rules, lost good government and privileges. Subject, request for resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the provision of technical relief, augmentation assistance, and the municipality of Subproyono Españo la. For the presiding officer, the committee rules, lost good government privileges, which has been tasked to consider, subject mission would like to report to his honorable body its findings and recommendations with the following premises to it. Number one, that the request was communicated last January twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four by Ms., by Ms. Mary Gries, Minister Atore, MSWDO, and had been calender during the sixty-third regular session. Number two, that my partner professional went for and developed, will do this for memorandum pa, has the expertise to mend resources to provide technical relief, augmentation assistance, to enhance the municipality capabilities in the disaster response and management. Number three, that the same memorandum of agreement shall cover the terms and conditions for the provision of technical assistance, training capacity building, and other forms of support in the disaster preparedness, response, and recovery efforts. Number four, that the municipality of Subproyono Españo la is committed to ensuring the the well-being and safety of its residents, especially in the times of calamities and emergencies. Number five, that the agreement does not involve require money from the NGO. Findings and recommendation, premises considered, the committee find the resolution will enable the municipality to access technical assistance in support in disaster response and management activities in the near future further. It will improve, increase the resources of NGO. Therefore, the committee recommends the passage of the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Abderafa Edith Soria, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the provision of technical relief, augmentation assistance, and the municipality of Subproyono Españo la, and to be calender for second reading in this particular session, prepared by Jualai Har main, chairman committee on rules, lost good government and privileges. Yes, record, Honorable Napi Saigon, member, and your serving colleague, member.
Right, any comments or amendments regarding the committee report number dash twenty-two four dash thirty-nine? There is none, kindly move.
I move committee report number twenty-two four dash thirty-nine, submitted by committee rules, lost good government and privileges. Subject, request for resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa, for the provision of the technical relief, augmentation assistance, and the municipality of Subproyono Españo la, be adopted.
The dash, because the committee report number dash twenty-two four dash thirty-nine is served by adopted. Right, the committee report number dash twenty-two four dash forty-one, by the committee on ways and means, games and amusement.
Comit?
Yes, sir.
Committee report number twenty-two four dash forty-one, submitted by committee on ways and means and games and amusement. Subject, approval of the request for endorsement of Mr. Sonic Uli for the capfighting events, one cap derby on February three, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four. For the presiding officer, the committee on ways and means and games and amusements, to which a particular measure was referred to, had already confirmed. For its consideration, those would like to present its findings and recommendation with the following premises to it. Number one, that Mr. Sonic Uli, franchise holder for capfight operation, for endorsement for his capfighting events, one cap derby on February three, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four. Number two, that capfighting, capfight operation is regulated in the municipality by municipal ordinance number twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty dash one nine five, which entitles franchise to conduct regular capfights every Sunday in special capfights that exceed five times in a month, provided no two permits shall be issued in one particular week. Number three, that February twenty-three, ten had already passed, those remaining events in February seventeen and twenty-four shall be conferred approval. Findings and recommendation, the committee is in opinion that consideration of the request will be in accordance with all existing issuance and the local ordinance regulating capfighting in the municipality, provided permit to operate is duly renewed. Therefore, premises considered, the committee recommends the approval of the request of for endorsement of Mr. Sonic Uli for the capfighting events, one cap derby on February seventeen and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, to be calender for second reading in this particular session, prepared by your serving chairman committee on ways and means and games and amusements. Concord, Honorable Jonathan J. O., of chairman, Honorable, Jualai Har main, member.
Hi, any comments or amendments regarding committee report number dash twenty-two four dash forty-one? There is none, kindly move.
I move committee report number twenty-two four dash forty-one, submitted by committee on ways and means and games and amusements. Subject, approval of the request for endorsement of Mr. Sonic Uli for the capfighting events, one cap derby on February three, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, be adopted.
Has, has been moved, the committee report number dash twenty-two four dash forty-one, by the committee on ways and means, games and amusement. Approval of the request for endorsement of Mr. Sonic Uli for capfighting events, one cap derby on February three, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, is served by adopted. Seventeen and twenty-four is served by adopted. Letter I, color business, A, address business, from the previous administration, none, from the previous session, none. Letter B, business for the day, second reading, number one, drop ordinance number dash twenty-four dash two eighty-four. Modifying the compensation benefits of public worker mandated by the Republic, Republic of number, that's uh, number seven-three-zero-zero-five, Magna Carta of Public Workwear, adapting for the purpose, it's a circular number zero-one S two thousand twelve. At Department of Budget and Management and Department of Health, ordinance adapting pertinent provision in joint circular number one, S, the, series of twenty-two twelve, other department of budget and management department. Si, ano na po? Luwak ako, report?
Ano?
Sapayanan sa leheng.
Drop ordinance number twenty-two four dash twenty-four, modifying the compensation and benefits of the public, of public health workers mandated by public act number seven, seven-three-zero-zero-five, Magna Carta of Public Health Workers, adapting for the purpose, joint circular number one, series of twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twelve of Department of Budget and Management and Department of Health and Ordinance, adapting pertinent provisions in joint circular number one, series of twenty-two field of the Department of Budget and Management, Department of Health. Sponsored by councillor Jual. Whereas the public act seventy-three oh five, section thirty-five, otherwise, otherwise known as Magna Carta of Public Workers, approved on March twenty-six, nineteen ninety-two, authorizes the secretary of the Department of Health to formulate the, and prepare the necessary rules and regulation to implement the provisions of the same act. Whereas joint budget circular number one, series of twenty-twelve of the Department of Budget and Management and Department of Health issued on November twenty-nine, twenty-twelve, prescribe the rules and regulation on the grant of compensation related Magna Carta benefits of top public health workers. Whereas joint resolution number four, series of two thousand nine, approved on June seventeen, two thousand nine, states that the grant comprehension, comprehension relation related Magna Carta benefits to PE, the P H Ws, need to re-recognizationalize to ensure equating in uniformity on enumeration. Whereas the BM with the coordination of other agency concern shall determine the qualifications, conditions, and rates in the grant of the same benefits and to determine the rules that may be categorized under the total compensation for framework. Whereas to determine the whether personal, personnel may be considered by P H Ws, the DOH shall ensure that the health services function of an agency are authorized by law or by proper authority. Another form, most of councillor Black, gulibe, sugunde by councillor Black, be it ordained, as it's heard by ordained by the Samilyang Bayan, that section one, item ten, this ordinance shall be known and cited as the Subproyono Españo la Magna Carta comprehension and benefits to public health workers, P H Ws. Section two coverage, this ordinance covers all health employees holding regular contract or international position, rendering services on full-time or part-time basis. Section, section three, definition of term. Number one, health workers are mean all persons employed in the hospitals, sanitary health, infirmaries, health centers, rural health units, barangay health stations, clinic, and other health-related establishments. Number four, adoption, joint circular number one of twenty-twelve, oh, DBM, DOH is served by adopted for implementation. Number one, additional compensation for services beyond the normal work hours and non-working days. Number two, honorary per medical legal service. Number three, night shift differential. Number four, hazard thing. Number five, subsid, subsistence allowance. Number six, longevity pay. Number seven, laundry allowance. Section five, repealing clause. All mapal ordinances implementing rules and regulations, executive order, and the other issuance found to be consistent with the contrary to, to the provisions of the ordinance are heard by repealed and amended accordingly. Section three, effectiveness clause, this ordinance shall take a tactic if it upon the approval of the mayor, compliance to the posting requirement mandated in the local government code of nineteen ninety-one, so ordered.
Alright, right, thank you so much. Drop ordinance number dash twenty-two four dash two eighty-four, read by the honorable councillor, any comments or amendments? If there is no comments, kindly move.
So before I move, Mr. Presiding, pwede ba sa sponsor dito, all of the members? Alang?
Oo, pwede lang.
Uh, drop ordinance number twenty-two four dash two eighty-four, modifying the compensation and benefits of the public health workers mandated by Republic Act number seventy-three zero-zero-five, Magna Carta of Public Health Workers, adapting for the purpose, joint circular number one, series twenty-twelve, of Department of Budget and Management and Department of the Health and Ordinance, adapting pertinent provision in joint circular number one, series twenty-two of the Department of Budget and Management, Department of Health, sponsored by the body, is adapted.
Alright, the drop ordinance number dash twenty, number dash twenty-two hundred eighty-four is served by adopted. Let's proceed to committee report two, three. Three, four, and five, alright.
Uh, Mr. Presiding, uh, I move the three items, committee report, number, number one, committee report, uh, number twenty-two four dash thirty-eight of the committee on rules, lost good government and privileges, request for the resolution authorizing the local chief executive. Memorandum agreement with the Establety Defense Office for memorandum pa for the supplementary feeding program. memorandum agreement with the DSWD office for memaropa for the supplementary feeding program in the Municipalities of Subronyo Españo la.
And?
And committee report number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine of the committee on rules, laws, good government, and privileges, request for the resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum agreement with the DSWD office for memaropa for the provision of technical relief, augmentation assistance in the municipality of Subronyo Españo la and committee, and committee report number twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, approval of the request for the endorsement of Mr. Sari Quli for the cap fighting events, one cap derby on February seven, seventeen, and twenty-four, be adopted.
Resolution number, uh, dash twenty twenty-four, dash one hundred sixty-nine, resolution number dash twenty, twenty-four, dash one seventy, and resolution number dash one seven one, uh, all resolutions are by adopted. Alright, let's, uh, proceed to another urgent measure. By communication from Martsito Apoy. Further ask for urgent consideration. And Honorable Martsito Apoy, the acting municipal mayor, requesting for the council to enact the resolution authorizing to enter into Mowa with the Center for Health Development, member of Mowa. As a help. And, uh, Subronyo Españo la District Hospital for Medical Assistance to Indigent and Financially Capacitated Patient Program, which is requested for transfer funds, rebad now, from L G U to L G U. Wala naman ito, siguro tayong pera na nalalbas, just requesting, okay? Huh? Oh, imo mo na lang, consider.
I move that item urgent, urgent measure, item number five, communication from Honorable Martsito C. Apoy, acting municipal mayor, requesting the council to enact a resolution authorizing the acting municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Center, Center for Health Development, memaropa in the Subronyo Españo la District Hospital for the Medical Assistance to indigent and financially in the positive change paid patients, M I F I P, program which the requirement for the transfer funds from the Department of Health to the LGU and number six, the same communication from Honorable Martsito Apoy, acting municipal mayor requesting the council to enact a resolution authorizing the acting municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Center Health Development, memaropa for the grant of health emergency allowance to eligible healthcare workers and non-healthcare non-healthcare workers assigned in the health facilities in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and other health emergencies which require, which is requirement for the transfer of funds from the Department of Health to LGU be adopted.
Right. Martsito, the double second that the committee authorizing the acting municipal mayor to enter into Mowa with the Center for Health Development and Subronyo Españo la Health Hospital for Medical Assistance to Indigent and Financially Capacitated Patient Program, which is required to transfer funds from the Department of Health to L G U is served by adopted and, uh, authorizing municipal, acting municipal mayor requesting the council to enact a resolution, authorizing authorizing, uh, the acting municipal mayor to enter into Mowa with a memaropa and grant of health emergency allowance to eligible health care workers and non-healthcare workers assigned in the health facilities in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and other health emergencies, which is required to transfer funds from the Department of Health to L G U is served by adopted. By now, if there's no urgent measure, we will proceed to the second, uh, third and final reading. Si, announce and this is none. And letter D, announcement and reminder. Consulor Biwo, any announcement and reminders from the VCL? There's no, uh, reminders? Ma'am, sekretary, madam sekretary, don't have any reminder? If there is none, bisa sabihin guys din, okay? There is none, uh, let's proceed to adjournment. Uh, Consulor, bahala po, chat. Uh, si, I'm move and just again then our, our sixty-fourth regular session, ibinangguyan, bayan Subronyo Palawan is, is served by adjourned.